Okay, please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant Ellis, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and are there changes to the agenda?
Yes, that we're going to pull item number thirty-one.
Okay, thank you. Public comment. Hearing none. We will, I would take a motion for minutes.
I move that we approve, meeting minutes, items one through eight.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
Consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items nine through twelve.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, and payables?
I move that we approve payables for September thirty through October four, two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of four million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, and jury panel payments in the amount of five thousand, twelve dollars and forty-five cents.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item fourteen, board approval request, FY twenty-four annual state, annual settlement statement to the auditor per Idaho Code thirty-one dash two, one, one, two, and this would be the treasurer presenting to the clerk.
Jill Smith, chief deputy treasurer, for the record. In accordance with Idaho Code thirty-one dash two zero zero six, I'm appearing on behalf of Treasurer Matheson. As the commissioners are aware, each month, the treasurer provides treasurer's reports to the auditor and the B O C C. Idaho Code thirty-one dash two one one two requires that in addition to these monthly reports, annually, the treasurer must make a full settlement of accounts with the auditor, incorporating the monthly account settlements for the prior fiscal year. This is to occur on the first Tuesday after the first Monday of October in the presence of the commissioners, which is today. So I am now respectfully submitting this annual account settlement to Jennifer Locke, Cootney County clerk.
Any comments from the clerk? Okay, then I would take a motion that acknowledges the treasurer's settlement for Idaho Code to the clerk.
I move that we acknowledge the FY two thousand and twenty-four annual settlement statement to the auditor per Idaho Code three one dash two one one two and the treasurer's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item fifteen is a public hearing, and it is Resolution two zero two four dash six seven, and it is to increase DMV registration admin fee with the assessor's office and vehicle licensing department. Is Chief Deputy Savage on the phone?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Dyson Savage, chief deputy assessor. I'm sitting with Anna Paul Mosi, our DMV manager. I apologize to not be in front of you. We are offsite at a managerial training today. So if you hear some background noise from us, my apologies for that. What you have before you is a four-dollar increase to the vehicle title admin fee. Registration, registration admin fee. We went over this during the budget time per Idaho Code. This is a public hearing to increase that fee.
Okay, I would, first, does the board have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, then I would ask the public, is anyone here to speak or on the phone in favor of or against the increase in fee? Okay, going once, going twice. I would have a motion to end public testimony.
I move that we end public testimony for Resolution two zero two four dash six seven, which is the resolution to increase DMV registration admin, admin fee with the assessor's office.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, we're in deliberations, and I think this is a prudent move, and I support this. Bill?
Uh, yes, so I support your motion.
Okay, you broke up a little bit, but I understand that you support it as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution two zero two four dash six seven to increase the DMV registration admin fee with the assessor and vehicle license DMV.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item sixteen, thank you guys. Item sixteen.
Thank you.
Amendment to the standard agreement for professional services with Jacobs Engineering and our solid waste department. Director Phillips, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. John Phillips, for the record. This is a proposed amendment to an existing agreement with Jacobs Engineering for landfill phase E three. As you know, landfill cell E three is currently under construction, and this is a needed area for the landfill for additional space for refuse placement in the future. Jacobs, our contracted engineering firm, has encountered substantial unforeseen geotechnical challenges over the course of this work. Overcoming these challenges has incurred, incurred additional expense over and above what was originally agreed to. Because of this, the solid waste department requests the B O C C approve and sign this amendment to the existing professional services agreement with Jacobs for an additional not-to-exceed cost of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, and this will finish the project. The department does have funds budgeted to cover these costs, and legal did prepare this amendment for your consideration.
All right, questions, motion?
I move that we approve the first amendment to the standard agreement for professional services with Jacobs Engineering and Solid Waste.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, thank you.
All right, items seventeen through twenty are some contracts for hazard fuel treatment. We'll go ahead and just continue taking them one by one. The first one is for Stone River Post Falls Community Forest Fire Smart Grant, three and a half acres, nine thousand, five hundred dollars with Zumbro Land Management LLC. McLafferty is the party, and our O E M, Ms. Littlefield, please.
Andrea Littlefield, for the record. Cootney County Office of Emergency Management respectfully requests that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract between Cootney County and Zumbro Land Management LLC in the amount of ninety-five hundred dollars for three point five acres of hazard fuel hand treatment for the Post Falls Community Forest Grant.
Okay, questions, motion?
I move that we approve the contract for hazard fuel treatment for Stone River Post Falls Community Forest Fire Smart Grant for three and a half acres in the amount of nine thousand, five hundred dollars with Zumbro Land Management LLC, McLafferty, and the Office of Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item eighteen, grant amendment two-two dash E M P G zero five five, and this is for fiscal year twenty-two, emergency management performance grant amendment, and FEMA in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars, seventy-four cents, no match required, and Office of Emergency Management. Ms. Littlefield, again.
This is Andrea Littlefield, for the record. Office of Emergency Management respectfully requests that the Board of County Commissioners approve the acceptance of the twenty-two emergency management grant amendment from a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents to a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. The grant adjustment resulted in Cootney County receiving an additional four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and ninety-four cents in grant funds. The acceptance of this additional funds will not require any county match beyond what has already been allocated in the E M P G budget. Accepting the additional overmatch funds represents a significant opportunity to enhance our emergency management capabilities and ensure a safer community.
And there's a performance date expiring September of twenty-three. Is that normal?
Um, so these are the overmatch funds, so we have, these are our funds to spend, even though the grant has closed.
Okay.
The performance period isn't applicable to these additional funds.
Okay.
So even though the grant has technically closed out, this is in addition to.
Okay, thank you. Questions, motion?
Thank you.
I move that we approve grant amendment number two-two E M P G zero five five from FY twenty-two, emergency management performance grant. The amendment with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to one hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents with no additional match requirement and the Office of Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item nineteen, this is a contract for hazard fuel hand treatment for Post Falls Community Forest Fire Smart Grant, and it's for chipping with North Idaho Landscape and Forestry LLC, Party of Davis, and Ms. Littlefield.
Andrea Littlefield, for the record. This is a, sorry, manage, sorry. Office of Emergency Management is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract between Cootney County and North Idaho Landscape and Forestry in the amount of three thousand dollars for one acre of hazard fuel chipping treatment for the Post Falls Community Forest Grant.
Okay, questions, motion?
I move that we approve the contract for hazard fuel hand treatment for Post Falls Community Forest Fire Smart Grant and chipping with North Idaho Landscape and Forestry LLC, Davis, and the Office of Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item twenty, this is a contract for hazard fuel hand treatment for Veterans Centennial Park Fire Smart Grant, chipping of two acres with Alpha Services LLC, Party of Odell, and Office of Emergency Management, Ms. Littlefield.
Yeah, this is Andrea Littlefield, for the record. We are requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract between Cootney County and Alpha Services LLC in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for two acres of hazard fuel chipping treatment for the Veterans Centennial Park Fire Smart Grant.
Questions, motion?
I move that we approve the contract with, for hazard fuel hand treatment for Veterans Centennial Park Fire Smart Grant, chipping two acres with Alpha Services LLC, Odell, and the Office of Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item twenty-one, board approval request. This is Canfield Road Repair and our nine-one-one department. Mr. Mallory, please.
Alan Mallory, nine-one-one center, for the record. We have a agreement with the U S Forest Service to maintain the road on Canfield Mountain to get to the radio site. We split that cost between Charter Communications and Idaho Public Television, and we have a bid from Bettis Excavating that we need your consideration for approval, and our portion would be twelve thousand, one ninety-six and sixty-six cents. We did have it budgeted. We just had it in the wrong account, so when I looked at it, it didn't look like we had it budgeted, but we do.
Okay, and then is that something that we need to put on the record with the auditor's office, or?
We will move the funds into, it is currently sitting in eighty-five seventeen in the one-twenty-four budget, and we're going to move it to eighty-five nineteen just for our records.
Okay, I'm seeing the auditor saying just fine, so. Okay, questions, motion?
So we do not need a mention on the budget?
No.
Okay. I move that we approve the request for the Canfield Road Repair with nine-one-one.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-two, this is pace scheduling software program, and with Pace Schedular and our sheriff's department. Lieutenant Ellis or Ms. Gilmore?
It would be you. Mark Ellis, for the record. We are requesting from the commission's permission to fund and utilize the pace scheduling software. The total cost is approximately ten, or is ten thousand, six hundred dollars for the year, and has a negotiated price for the year twenty twenty-five. This program has eliminated many man-hours that our sergeants and our staff have to use as far as calling for overtime shifts, scheduling, and it's been a lot of conflicts. So we are requesting to utilize this program. It's so important to us that we actually found some money that we can reallocate inside our budgets because it's so important.
Okay. So in the beginning, we thought that maybe time and attendance would be able to take the place of this, but instead, we just need both of them.
So what happened with time and attendance, it works great for the payroll. What we found out is they didn't have the actual systems that we need. It's called the message blast, where we can send out overtime shifts. We're unable to see our overtime shifts, and the big thing is, considering like the jail, they have seventeen different scheduled shifts, so you have seventeen different categories you can't see all at one time, and so it's just been a nightmare to manage the schedule.
Okay, and did you guys use the pace before?
We did.
Okay. And how long were you without pace?
So they extended it for one month. So what we did is we did a dual program. We used both time and attendance and pace at the same time, and so we've been trying to make time and attendance work, and then they just don't have the same capabilities as pace does.
Okay. Questions, motion?
I move that we approve the pace scheduling software program and the pace scheduler with the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
Right, item twenty-three, this is K C S O and Hayden Law Enforcement Agreement. So it's the city of Hayden, and for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five years, is this by calendar year or by fiscal year?
It's by our fiscal year.
Our fiscal year, perfect. Okay, and then, go ahead, Captain Smart.
I think you already outlined it perfectly. This is just the agreement for law enforcement services for Hayden for this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, and we just need to retroactive it to October one?
Correct.
Okay, so that does need to be included in the motion, and questions, motion?
I move that we retroactively approve to October one, two thousand and twenty-four, the K C S O and Hayden Law Enforcement Agreement with the city of Hayden for two thousand and twenty-four, and I would presume through two thousand and twenty-five, September of two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did you say one or nine? I didn't hear if it was September first, or, I thought you said one.
October first.
Oh.
Retroactively to October first.
Perfect, that's fine, thank you.
Yes, with the sheriff and patrol.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
And we have another one that's going to be retroactive. I want to make sure that we don't miss that one. So, all right, item twenty-four, board approval request, and this is for a two thousand and twenty-five, actually, I think it's for two of the trucks, right? Two thousand and twenty-five GMC Sierra for marine and backcountry. Sergeant Miller?
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Sergeant Ryan Miller. Yes, this is the two trucks that we ordered a little while back. They have arrived, and I'm requesting permission to pay the bills. It's a two thousand and twenty-five GMC twenty-five hundred for marine out of vessel funds in the amount of fifty, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents. And then from the general funds for the backcountry truck out of the patrol budget, fifty-two thousand, eighty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, questions, motion?
Aye.
I move that we approve the request for the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-five GMC Sierra marine and backcountry trucks with the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item twenty-five, K C S O Twin Lakes Elementary S R O Agreement, and this is with Lakeland Joint School District for Twin Lakes Elementary and our sheriff's patrol. Captain Smart?
Thank you, commissioners. Again, this is also a retroactive as of September, September of two thousand and twenty-four. September first, Lakeland has asked us to enter into agreement to supply a third school resource officer for their district. This will be at Twin Lakes Elementary, and so we're just requesting to enter into that agreement for this year. It will be, again, at seventy percent of a full-loaded wage.
The agreement actually says August first, but if September first is the date, we'll go with that?
September first was, you know, opening school time, that's when we would enact that.
Great, thank you. Questions, motion?
I move that we retroactively approve to September one, two thousand and twenty-four, the K C S O Twin Lakes Elementary S R O Agreement with Lakeland Joint School District, Twin Lakes Elementary, and the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
Thank you. Item twenty-six, board approval request, and this is with Cintas Standard Rental Service Agreement with our sheriff's department. And Captain Smart, are you handling this one?
I am. Again, this is an agreement, we've had an ongoing agreement for quite a while with Cintas to provide services for carpet, the carpet cleaning, the carpet drop-offs, and some of the laundry services for our auto shop mechanics. So we'd like to just continue on with that service for the following contract cycle.
All right, and is it budgeted?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions, motion?
I move that we approve the, wait, which one?
Item twenty-six?
Yep. The contract with Cintas and their standard rental service agreement with the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, item twenty-seven and twenty-eight, I think, can be handled together. This is resolution numbers two zero two four dash seven one and seven two, classify records and destroy records from patrol. Captain Smart?
Thank you, commissioners. Yeah, we have a request to classify various patrol records that are far exceeding the statutes of limitations and requirements for keeping. So we'd like to classify those as temporary and then, again, issue the resolution for destruction of those.
Are any of these, if they are personnel-related, are they also in personnel files?
To be honest, no. There's a myriad of, there was, there was files in the, in this drawer that's kept, I mean, we got sergeants from twenty years ago in there with stuff in there. Should have been purged ages ago, so one, those files are going to be gone anyway because those are no longer members of our agency. And in fact, I'd probably say almost ninety-five percent of the stuff in there are people who are no longer with the agency even.
Okay, yeah, because it's just going, it's saying everything beyond two years is what you're asking to classify and destroy. So I think as long as we're making sure and double-checking that, number one, they're not subject to public records. We have outstanding public records requests for these, and that they're not current personnel file, things that are not duplicated in the file.
Yes, and to be honest, there's probably, again, ninety-five percent of it is probably ten years or older. It just happens to be a collection point that somebody started in about three regimes prior to me taking over that position, and you open up the drawer, and I think past captains have opened up the drawer and closed it, and I don't know what those are, and I don't want to start getting into those, and it's time to get those out and remove them and get rid of them.
Sure. Questions, motion?
I move that we approve Resolution two zero two four dash seven seven, I'm sorry, two zero two four dash seven one, classify records for destruction with patrol and the sheriff's office, and approve Resolution two zero two four dash seven two, destroy those records with patrol and the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, thank you.
All right, item twenty-nine, Resolution two zero two four dash seven seven, which is the donation of surplus property to the public defender, which would be the state public defender's office, and Director Voler, please.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. Before you, it's a resolution to formalize the donation that we previously discussed, furniture that is of no value from the public defender's office.
Okay, questions, motion?
I move that we approve Resolution two zero two four dash seven seven, donation of surplus property to the state public defender's office and building and grounds.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, thank you.
All right, item thirty, Resolution two zero two four dash seven eight, and this is a resolution regarding declaration of necessity and authorization to hire outside counsel to represent the assessor in the Cabela's twenty-four tax appeal, case number C V two eight dash two four dash four eight eight two, and our civil prosecuting attorney's division, Pat Braden.
Thank you, commissioners. Pat Braden, civil deputy prosecutor, for the record. As I'm sure you know, the, excuse me. Cabela's has filed tax appeals in district court for their two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four assessments. This board has previously declared necessity and authorized the assessor to hire Colton Boils to represent the assessor in the Cabela's two thousand and twenty-three tax appeal. This resolution would extend that authority and finding of necessity to the two thousand and twenty-four Cabela's Tax Appeal, which is case number C V twenty-eight dash twenty-four dash four eight eight two. The resolution contains all the findings that are required through Article eighteen, Section six, the Idaho Constitution, and Idaho Code, Section thirty-one dash eight one three.
All right, when do we discuss the finances?
At any, at any time. That would be something between, a conversation between the board, Mr. Assessor Kovacs and Mr. Boils. I think Mr. Boils would probably need an opportunity to determine how much, if any, additional funds would be needed to add the two thousand and twenty-four tax appeal to the two thousand and twenty-three.
Oh, okay, so maybe they can overlap them and not have to pay additional?
My, my guess, just from my own experience in handling these cases, is that any, you know, additional funding should be fairly minimal. At most, having an expert appraiser update their appraisal to include two thousand and twenty-four, which shouldn't take a whole lot.
Okay, so if there are additional funds that are needed, would you please schedule an executive session so we can?
Yes, I will communicate that to Assessor Kovacs.
Thank you. Questions, motion?
I move that we approve Resolution two zero two four dash seven eight, which is a resolution regarding a declaration of necessity and authorization to hire counsel to represent the Cootney County Assessor in the Cabela's two thousand and twenty-four tax appeal, case number C V two eight dash two four dash four eight eight two, with prosecuting attorney and civil.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, may I be excused?
Pat, before you depart, I still haven't gotten the official request for the court packet for either one of those.
Say that again?
You know how they send me a request for a court packet, and I do it up and give it to your secretary up there?
Oh, like an agency record?
Yeah, yeah, that. I still haven't gotten that even for last year's, so.
Okay, I will, I will check up on that.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item thirty-one has been pulled. Item thirty-two, Eastside Fire District Annexation. There are four parcels, and our other civil deputy prosecuting attorney, Dave Ferguson.
Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped over thirty-one. My, my apologies. Yeah, there's a request for annexation here for, I believe it's four different properties, if I recall.
Yes.
I reviewed the packet, and Eastside Fire District approved the request for annexation. Publishing was proper. All the properties are adjacent to currently annexed property, so this board should approve annexation of these parcels.
All right, and in the motion, do you need the actual four parcels? All right. And in the motion, do you need the actual four parcels named?
It just helps for the record, for clarity's sake. You just want to state the owners. You don't have to go into property descriptions.
Okay. Page 281 has the thing. Questions, motion?
You want the parcel IDs?
No, just the names, I think, will be fine.
Second column?
Yes, please.
It's right here. Yeah, I've got it right. Okay. I move that we approve the East Side Fire District Annexation for the four parcels, Azrite LLC, Brenda Garcia, Erin and Jessica Adams, JBQL LLC, and Mas Revocable Trust with the B.O.C.C.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Thank you. Item 20, I'm sorry, item 33, which is Resolution 2024-70. This is a public hearing, and it's for our Cooten County Waterways Ordinance and Increase in Fees with Parks and Waterways. Director Snyder, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. Before you, it's a resolution that proposes an increase in user fees and fines for Cooten County Parks and Waterways facilities. The fees were last reviewed by the Waterways Advisory Board in 2020 and adopted and implemented in 2021, and as per the board encourages us to review, conduct periodic reviews of our fee schedules, Parks and Waterways requested the Waterways Advisor Board review those department fees and fines and provide recommendations to the board. And so, in their meeting in March of 2024, the Waterways Advisory Board reviewed those fees and fines and provided the Board of County Commissioners with those recommended increases at your meeting with the Waterways Advisor Board in April of 2024. The Waterways Advisor Board revisited their recommendations, both in their June and their September meeting, and those are memorialized in the resolution before you. Notably, this was advertised per Idaho Code. The primary reason for recommending the user fee increases is to ensure insolvency for the department so it can continue to provide quality service to the public while reducing burden on the taxpayer. And the largest factor is affecting the increases of the cost of materials such as concrete, steel, contractor services, restroom pumping services, and other items directly related to the cost of day-to-day operations of the department. And I don't think it comes as a surprise to anyone that we've seen significant increases since 2020, when the Advisor Board last reviewed this. Other factors affecting this increase is growth. Growth has a significant impact on the cost to operate these facilities, increases in our restrooms, wear and tear on infrastructure, and increased materials necessary to accommodate users. And there's an important factor here as well, Commissioners. The county simply can't control the increased use. People are showing up, and we have to respond to that use, and that, there's a cost to that. So, with all that said, I recommend the board adopt Resolution 2024-70 to ensure department solvency, and so we're able to manage the public's recreational facilities commensurate with their expectations while reducing burden on the taxpayer. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. I will now call on the public if there is anyone who wants to testify in favor or against this fee ordinance. Nobody on the phone? All right, then I would take a motion to end public testimony.
I move that we end public testimony for Resolution 2024-70 with the Cooten County Waterways Ordinance and the Increase in Fees with Parks and Waterways.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right. Thoughts?
Look, we should be charging fees commensurate with the expenses, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. Bill?
Yep. It's pretty straightforward.
All right. I agree. I would take a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-70, which is the Cooten County Waterways Ordinance Increase in Fees with Parks and Waterways.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Item 34. This is Highway 95 Trail Maintenance Memorandum of Understanding with Idaho Transportation Department and Parks and Waterways, Director Snyder.
Nick Snyder, again, for the record. Commissioners, as we discussed in our 10 o'clock status update meeting, our 2018 agreement with ITD, I think, has been addressed all of the deficiencies of the trail that we discussed this morning, and my request is the Board of County Commissioners to give us direction as to whether or not we should proceed with the maintenance beginning the week of October 14th or not.
All right. Questions, discussion, motion?
We talked about it this morning. I've looked through it. It's a pretty straightforward MOU, and like what was discussed, you know, for some reason, something changes, obligations can't be met, there's a 30-day out, so it seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the Highway 95 Trail Maintenance MOU with the Idaho Transportation Department and Parks and Waterways.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right. Item 35. This is Board Approval Request, and it is a grant application for recreational trail program on the Centennial Trail repairs and our Parks and Waterways, Director Snyder.
Nick Snyder, again, for the record. Again, this is another item we discussed at 10 o'clock this morning, and that would, I'm seeking board authorization to proceed with a recreational trail program grant to repair the two miles of asphalt on the Centennial Trail using Joint Powers Grant Match Fund in the amount of $200,000.
Okay. What is the grant amount for?
400, the total project is 400. We'll request 200 with 200 match, so the grant request amount would be 200,000.
Okay. Questions, motion?
I move that we approve the request for the recreational trail program grant application with the, for Centennial Trail repairs with Parks and Waterways.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Public comment. Okay. Hearing none. 2:38. Meeting adjourned.